City of Apache Junction Council Meeting to Order. Invocation will be led by Vice Mayor Wilson and the pledge by Councilmember Schroder.
Heavenly Father, we are gathered together this wonderful evening to perform city business. We and our staff ask for your oversight as we continue to keep this committee, community, excuse me, a great place to live, work, have a business, and raise a family. We are thankful for the change in our weather and enjoy the wonderful temperatures that we are experiencing now. We can now spend more time outside enjoying your creation. We again ask for your assistance as we continue to work through these times and as we also do our part to keep us safe and healthy. We also ask for your protective hand for all our first responders as they continue to protect us and our belongings, extend this to our military members and their families wherever they're serving throughout the world. Keep them all safe each and every day. In the Lord's name, amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless you.
Roll call.
Mayor Surti.
Here.
Vice Mayor Wilson.
Here.
Councilmember Barker.
Here.
Councilmember Evans.
Here.
Councilmember Rizzi.
Present.
Councilmember Schroder.
Here.
Councilmember Struble.
Here.
You have a quorum, Your Honor.
Do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
Your Honor, I move that the consent agenda be accepted as presented and that Resolution Number 20-40 be moved to the beginning of new business at the request of the city clerk and that Resolution Number 20-39, a final plat approval for subdivision case SD-1-18, a request by Superstition Vista Development LLC represented by Dan Kaufman for a 256-lot residential subdivision named Superstition Vista located near southeast corner of Baseline and Cortez Road be approved.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Schroder.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson.
Yes.
Councilmember Barker.
Yes.
Councilmember Evans.
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi.
Yes.
Councilmember Struble.
Yes.
Mayor Surti.
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor.
I have a couple proclamations tonight. The first one is for Small Business Saturday. Whereas the City of Apache Junction, Arizona celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently 30.7 million small businesses in the United States. They represent 99.7% of all firms with paid employees in the United States are responsible for 64.9% of net new jobs created from 2000 to 2018. And whereas small businesses employ 47.3% of the employees in the private sector in the United States, 96% of consumers who shopped on Small Business Saturday agree that shopping small, independently-owned businesses supports their commitment to have a positive social, economic, and environmental impact on 97% of consumers who shopped on Small Business Saturday agree that small businesses are essential to their community. And whereas the City of Apache Junction, Arizona supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities, and whereas advocacy groups as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I, Jeff Surti, Mayor of the City of Apache Junction, Arizona, do hereby proclaim November 28th, 2020, as Small Business Saturday and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. And I believe Denise from the Chamber of Commerce is going to accept.
And shop locally.
What?
I said, and shop locally.
Yes.
Come on up. So you have to come get it. I'll make it into an airplane and float it to you. And then, and you can say some things at the mic, too.
She's small, so she's.
Speak a few minutes in front of the council.
Thank you, Mayor Surti, councilmembers. I'm proud to accept this proclamation on behalf of the Apache Junction Chamber of Commerce and Visitor Center. We do really want everyone to get out and shop local, not just on Small Business Saturday, but all throughout the holiday season and throughout the year. We do have a shop local program that we typically stop October 31st. This year is a special year, as everyone knows, so we've extended it through the rest of the year. And that is our way to help our small businesses. So thank you very much for this.
And we have another one. This is for National American Indian Heritage Month. Whereas the history and culture of our great nation have been significantly influenced by American Indians and indigenous peoples, and whereas the contributions of American Indians have enhanced the freedom, prosperity, and greatness of America today, and whereas their customs and traditions are respected and celebrated as part of a rich legacy throughout the United States, and whereas as Native American Awareness Week began in 1976 and recognition was expanded by Congress and approved by President George Bush in August 1990, designating the month of November as National American Indian Heritage Month, and whereas in honor of National American Indian Heritage Month, community celebrations as well as numerous cultural, artistic, educational, and historical activities have been planned. Now therefore, I, Jeff Surti, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Apache Junction, do hereby proclaim November as the National American Indian Heritage Month in the City of Apache Junction and urge all of our citizens to observe this month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. Is Bonnie Williams here?
And Bonnie, if you want to say some words.
We're not socially distanced, but it's. Don't be dear post that.
And Bonnie is from the Daughters of the American Revolution. Announcement of current events, let's start out with Councilmember Struble.
Not sure what they've got for me. Oh, this is, just a reminder, we're at, what, November 17th or 18th, whatever it is. The kids that received these certificates for graduating last spring, they have until December 31st to redeem them at the restaurants that are on back of the card. As I've said before, we've got plenty of money set aside at the LDR Foundation, and so it's there to be used. If LDR doesn't, if those don't get redeemed, LDR will use it for other purposes, but it's definitely there. So if you have any kids that graduated from any of the high schools in Apache Junction this past year, make sure that they turn those in. We're going to be holding the third annual prayer walk, AJ Prayer Walk, on January 9th. It's just an event to bring people into an ecumenical event. And you can read there, if you have any questions, you can call myself or the Table of Grace Church. Excellent. AJ Open Mic Night, that's my favorite thing of all time, except for AJ Kids Idol, which we'll talk about next. But that's a thing that we bring kids from eight to 80, come in and perform whatever talent they have, and it's just a great time to come in and show off people's talents. There against, it's this Friday night, 6 o'clock at the Table of Grace Church. And then the last one. Oh, the last one we're going to talk about is this year, it's going to be our fourth annual AJ Kids Idol. It's going to be a little different. We've always done it on a Saturday evening at an indoor venue. This year, because of everything that's going on, and we have to be cognizant of keeping spacing and all that fun stuff, we're going to do it on January 24th, and we're going to do it from 2 o'clock until approximately 4:00 or 5:00. We're going to do it outside, and we're still working on the venue because we're talking to the city about using the trailer, and we've got to figure out where there's going to be so we don't have to pay to have it moved, because that costs me money. But anyway, put January 24th at 2 o'clock, and we'll get you the venue. I say this every year, Braden and I, we say this every year that we do it, that the kids totally amaze us. We've got young people from kindergarten through 12th that are going to be performing. Right now, we've got 16 or 17 acts. We've got a choir and then 14 individuals and a quartet that are going to be performing. Every year when they do the auditions, Braden and I just kind of like, wow, because they just blow us out of the water. And so it's just a time for us to come together and celebrate our young people again, and the money that we raise for ticket sales and the sale of food and stuff goes back into the community to support kids' programs. So if anybody out there, we're hoping to get, last year I think we had like 220 people attend. Since it's going to be outdoors, we're hoping to get closer to 250, 300. So put January 24th on your calendar and hope to see everybody there.
Councilmember Evans.
I don't have anything.
Vice Mayor Wilson.
Yes. As you all know, I'm a member of the Superstition Horsemen's Association. This organization, this past August, has celebrated its 40 years as being a organization. They have worked with the City of Apache Junction related to horse issues, and what they were doing at this one was recognizing three of the founding people that were involved very heavily in putting this organization together. If you recognize Betty and Jim Swanson, because they were very heavily involved in it, even though they live outside the city, they were very instrumental in doing some of the zoning rules that we have inside the city. And then Nancy Carner, who was very heavily involved as well. We wanted to recognize them, and this was an opportunity to do it this past Wednesday.
Chip, is that the same shirt you're wearing tonight?
I guess so. Yeah. No, I haven't worn it since Wednesday.
Councilmember Barker.
No.
Councilmember Schroder.
No.
Councilmember Rizzi.
Yeah, I know it's after the fact, but the way that our council meetings were scheduled, I just wanted to thank all of our veterans. We are just so grateful for everybody that served this country and also for our first responders that just keep us safe each and every day. We're grateful to all of you, so thank you for your service.
Okay, so the great weather's here and the first Friday events that struggled all summer are now going, so look for that right in the center of our downtown in the antique mall parking lot. Also coming up, Bryant, I hope that you and Denise in your report will cover the jingle in the junction, the decorating that the chamber is now in charge of, and I'm getting asked a lot about the Holiday Light Parade. Can you explain how that's going to happen in your report? So with that, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Bryant Powell, City Manager. And first, I just want to say we will be doing our very best to get the information about the Holiday Light Parade. They call these a reverse parade, and I'm still trying to figure out exactly how that works, but what it is, is an opportunity for those who would have been floats are going to be lit up, and they'll be up on North Apache Trail, and then they'll be kind of curved around Flatiron Park. For me to be able to explain all the details might be a little difficult, but we are going to be working very hard closely with Al. Do we have a photo up, Al?
I don't have.
Okay. But we will get it out everywhere so that everyone can see how it works. I don't know if you want to come up, Al, and explain.
Real quickly there, Mayor and Council, Al Bravo, Public Information Officer for the city. It actually is already up on our homepage and all of our social accounts, also through parks. Basically, at 7:00 PM on that first Saturday in December, folks will come northbound on Idaho and then turn onto North Apache Trail coming west, southwest if you will, where they will be able to go through and see the floats. So the floats will sort of be on the side of the road, and they'll drive through them in that reverse parade sort of route, and they'll come through North Apache Trail all the way up to the regular Apache Trail, and then they'll be able to go out and see all the other businesses that are already lit for that day. That's going to be part of what we're telling everybody. So yes, there's flyers and whatnot already out, and we'll make sure to get a lot, a lot of communication going out between now and December.
We might need Parks and Rec staff to be out there saying, hey, you're going to miss it over here, or you might want to shift to be able to see it.
Exactly. So there's going to be a lot of folks in there doing that, and for the next council meeting, we'll make sure to get that flyer up so we can show it to everybody in case they're not aware, December the 5th at 7:00 o'clock.
Thank you, Al. Perfect. And then part of that whole night and evening will be an opportunity, and we'll encourage folks, and Denise, will you talk a little bit about the event, or jingle in the junction? But that's also kind of part of what people can do that same night as well. So Denise, so talk a little bit about that. And for my report tonight, I want to share something super neat, that we have worked closely with the City of Tempe. So for some time, we've had some residents who have come to council meetings who are not able to hear everything that's going on, and so we've asked around to other cities and towns, are there some, is there some technology that can be available? And as we did that, Tempe said, we've got some, because we're upgrading, and they gave these to us free. And so for those who may want to come to council meetings, who may be worried about not being able to hear everything, we have now some technology that would go on our ear and then be able to be used. So we are excited about that, and Matt McNulty, myself, Jennifer, will be available to help folks that come in that night of, and then we're working on some signage so that folks will be able to see that. Also tonight, we're very pleased and happy to have here with us the Chamber of Commerce, Denise, if you'll come on up. For our residents and for the Marin City Council, we have the opportunity to hear an update on our Visitor Center contract. So those who may not know, we have a contract that we enter into each year with the Apache Junction Chamber of Commerce, that they provide Visitor Center service. And so tonight, we have a report from Denise on those, on the contract. Thank you.
Thank you, Bryant. And before I start, I will give you a quick update on Jingle in the Junction. So Krista has done a wonderful job. It's hard to take her place. She used to manage the program and it's been handed to the chamber, which we are glad to do. So we've already got our creative, I'm sorry, I didn't know I was going to talk about that or I would have brought one to show you, but we've already gotten the word out to the community about the program. We will continue in the same way that Krista has done in the past and encouraging all the businesses, not just on the trail, but all throughout Apache Junction to decorate for the holidays. This year, more than ever, we need it. We need those lights and the sparkles and the joy from everyone. So we've already started visiting some of the businesses in person as well, because not everybody reads her email. And so we've already gone through the Flatiron Park area and then all the way down the trail to Ironwood, all the way back, the Pinell County Federal Credit Union area, and then the Ross Shopping Center area as well as the ACE area. So we are continuing to hit them up hard, and we're really grateful for the Parks and Rec. They are partnering with us on this. They're going to produce our map for us with all the locations here in AJ, and we are also going to do something a little bit different. I'm not sure if you've done this before, Krista, but we were told it would be helpful if all the businesses that are participating have a number so that our community doesn't have to remember all, although we'd like them to remember the businesses' names. So we are going to do sort of what Parks and Rec does for Easter and what they did for Halloween with the Monster Search, you know, and we'll do that for all the businesses as well. So we're still working really hard on that.
Great partnership. Yay.
Yes, yes. We love partnering with the city. Okay, so now on to our annual Visitor Center report. So our Visitor Center is a beautiful center, so hopefully everybody has gotten a chance to go in and see what we have in there and what we have to offer. We're very grateful and thankful for our partnership with the city on our Visitor Center. In years past, we've seen as many as 30,000 to 35,000 people a year going through our doors, but everyone knows this year, a little different, you know? So, but we've got 16 volunteers that run the Visitor Center part for us, and when I say run, I mean, they really do run it all for us, and they also help us a little bit with the chamber, just to keep them busy so they're not too bored. So what we do there is we provide a lot of pamphlets and information on what to do, what to see in AJ as well as other parts of the state. Our visitors are very knowledgeable about the area, and they keep knowledgeable by looking things up online, and we keep them appraised of any news that we hear. For example, if there's a fire in the area, we keep them updated daily on that because we get a lot of calls from the community. And you'll see in one of the slides, you know, that that is the majority of our calls are just community members calling for information. Then COVID hit, so we had to close our doors March 20th through June 1st. So I was a one-man show at that time. I was the only one running the chamber. I was taking all the calls from the chamber. I had them all forwarded to my cell phone. So I got to hear all the interesting things that our volunteers hear, and they're asked, you know, so now I have a complete understanding of that, you know? And it was hard. It was a really hard time for everyone, so a lot of people in the community were calling me saying their air conditioner broke and they don't have the money to fix it, you know? Can you suggest me a place that might help me and might work with me? I mean, those are the kinds of calls I was getting. It was really sad. And I tried to help everybody that I could, and there were, there's so many great organizations here in AJ that were helpful and wanted to help everybody during this time, especially in the beginning when it started to hit everybody really hard. So I was still working. I was sending out communication constantly. I was on about six Zoom calls a day because there was so much inter, information coming out and just hitting us all at once, and trying to sift through it all and just send out what, so that people can understand what the information really meant, and it really helped, I think. I got a lot of compliments on that. So I was really busy doing that during this timeframe. We decided to open up June 1st. We were the first Chamber of Commerce in the East Valley to open, and we're really proud of that. And we did have to open partially, meaning our hours were the same, but we had to partition off a part of the, of the Visitor Center, as you can see, and we also had to be prepared with Plexiglas partitions for our reception area. We had a sign made that you're seeing that your health is our number one priority, and that sign is on an A-frame outside of our door, and it still is. And I purchased masks and gloves and hand sanitizers and floor decals, and, I mean, you name it, I got everything set up before we opened, and we are still maintaining that. We have a thermometer in the office, and we have a form that the volunteers will take their temperature, they'll sign the form saying that they're healthy and able to be there. They wear masks anytime anyone walks in the door. We are not requiring masks in the door, but we're just recommending them, so we do have a mix of people wearing them and not wearing them. We don't bother them with that. But we do try to keep everyone's six feet distance when they're in there. In October, we actually took the partition down, not the Plexiglas, but the partition blocking off part of our Visitor Center, and now we're allowing people to come in and look at the brochures instead of ask for what they need, and it's been working out fine. It's been really a smooth transition. In 2020, our total visitors as of November 2nd, that was when the report was done, Arizona, you can see the numbers there, the majority of our visitors were from out of state at almost 5,000. We have added a lot of numbers since the 2nd because we're starting to get a lot more busy lately, but you can see what our numbers are as of 11/2, which was about 8,700 people. This shows our Arizona visitors 2019 and 2020 comparison numbers, and so you'll see that we are trending down, which is no surprise. We had just from Arizona, about 6,400 last year, and we're at about 2,800 this year. So we're trending less than half, but we are starting to see increased numbers now, so we're hopeful for the future. Out-of-state visitors, I thought I would show this cute colorful map so you can see, you know, where are our visitors coming from that are out of state, because that is the majority of our visitors that visit us. And as you can see, it's all mostly the northern states, Minnesota, Wisconsin, Iowa, North Dakota, South Dakota, Washington State, Illinois, and Michigan. Those are the majority states that are visiting our center, although they are represented from all of the states except for a few. I don't know why they're not coming, but Louisiana, Washington DC, Delaware, and Rhode Island, we haven't had any visitors from those states this year, but we did have two from Hawaii.
Great map.
Thank you.
Are you seeing any from Canada?
Yes, and actually, that'll be the next slide, and I'll be happy to send this to you, too.
It's a neat map.
Thanks. So our foreign visitors this year, as you can see, a lot less than last year because, you know, international, people aren't traveling internationally. But look at Canada. I mean, we still had 1,030 visitors, and actually, when I was looking over the last week or so, we have been seeing some Canadians come in the doors. And in talking to our RV park members, they are having some check-ins from Canadians because they are allowed to come in, but they have to fly in. And so people are flying in and they're chanting, I mean, they want to be here. So we are seeing some, not all, but we are seeing a big chunk start to come back. Also interesting on here, the UK is represented pretty high, as well as France and Italy. If you look at Italy's numbers, although it's only eight people versus two, it's not a big representation, but they're starting to come to Arizona a lot more than they have in the past. And we also have Iceland. Now, why are they coming from Iceland? Because they want to be warm. They want the sunshine. But that was really interesting to see as well. This is our phone call tracking system. So we do track all of our phone calls, our volunteers put hash marks down by what kind of call it was. So as I spoke about earlier, the majority of calls are local community information. Now, these calls do not include all the calls that I took during the time that we were closed, because I didn't track them, and I should have, but I didn't track them. So, and the majority were local community information. But also, they accept chamber calls and Arizona tourist information, and we did get some new resident relocations. I even got some of those during the time we were closed. People were wondering, you know, how we were doing, what is open here? They were thinking about relocating, and I would come to the office and put a packet together and send it to them. And we're really not down that much as far as calls go, especially if you take into account that I didn't count any of the ones during the time we were closed. And now, I'd like to have a special recognition, and then I'll ask if you have any questions. So we have one of our volunteers here. His name is Jim Edwards. He's been volunteering for us for 21 years. Amazing. He is our Volunteer Center Manager. He takes care of all of the volunteers. He does their scheduling. If somebody calls in sick, he replaces them or he finds a replacement for them. He also takes care of our flag, you know, that we have flying. So he comes in whenever it needs to be half-mast, doesn't matter what day of the week is, he comes and he takes care of that, and he's our flagmaster as well. And he's done so much for our Visitor Center, and everyone really appreciates him, and all the volunteers love working with him, and we are so honored to have him as part of our Visitor Center. So at this time, I'd like him to come up. Jim, I'd like to present this to you in appreciation for your 21 years of service at the Apache Junction Chamber of Commerce and Visitor Center. The woman that is standing with him is Sherry Schindler, and this month, she's celebrated her fifth year with us. So we have 16 volunteers, and they've been here a varying amount of years of service, but we're so appreciative of them, and thank you so much, Jim. We couldn't do it without you.
I don't know that I've ever been in there, and Jim hasn't been there.
He's always there. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Thank you.
So we had about 30,000 visitors last year. Right now, we're at about 9,000, just to kind of give you that update.
As of. As of now, Festival of the Superstition is still too far off to really make a call on, but hopefully we'll be back to.
We are planning the Lost Dutchman Days Parade. We're in communication with the rodeo folks, so we're moving forward with the parade and the carnival. Talked to the carnival, and they're on. So we're hopeful by then, you know, we can move forward. We're also looking at planning a Business and Leisure Expo. We're starting those plans right now, and that'll be in January, but it'll be held outdoors somewhere. So we're going to. and that'll be in January, but it'll be held outdoors somewhere. So, we're gonna keep going there. We had a great golf tournament last month. We sold out, 128 golfers. I mean, people are wanting to get out and do things. They want to experience life out here in AJ. And so, anything that we can do to help, we want to do that. I also thought I would mention that the most visited months were January and February, and not surprising, the lowest were June and July.
I wonder why.
I just wanted to make a comment. Thank you for the common sense approach with the masks. You know, it can be really stressful and embarrassing when people get put on the spot if they're not wearing one. And a lot of assumptions are made often. So, thank you for that. We're, we're really appreciative that you guys are just social distancing and not really going after people that can't or, or aren't wearing them. Thank you so much for that.
Thank you, Krista. Any other questions?
Thank you for a great presentation.
Yes.
Thanks, Robyn. And thank you all, too, for all your support of the Chamber and the Visitor Center. We really appreciate it, and we love our partnership with the city.
Thanks for hanging in there in the weirdest year I can remember.
You're welcome.
It couldn't have been easy by any means.
Yeah, but we're getting through.
Yep.
I see a light at the end of the tunnel.
Hopefully, lots of them for Christmas.
Yes, yes, right. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Denise, for coming in. And, Your Honor, that concludes my report.
Presentation and discussion on the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation on amending cargo container regulations in the city's zoning code. Mr. Kirch.
Our favorite.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Larry Kirch, Director of Planning and Development. So, this presentation, I can guarantee, won't be as long as last night's presentation.
Hopefully.
So, as you recall, last, I think it was February, the council asked the Plan Commission to look into how cargo containers are regulated. So, the Plan Commission met on a couple of occasions. Just to refresh everybody's memory, currently, cargo containers are allowed only in the RSGR, that's our 1.25 acre district, and if there's 1.25 acre parcel. So, some of the considerations that were under discussion that we, that I presented to the council, too, were the options that the council could do, or what were the options the Planning Commission can do. So, one would be to leave the regulations as they are. Another discussion point was to allow in all the zoning districts, I guess primarily residential, but set some new standards, limit the size, maybe limit the number. So, again, allow cargo containers, but allow them in all residential districts, but then focus on what zoning other parameters might be in play. Another item would be to keep in the RSGR, but eliminate the minimum requirement for acre and a quarter, which could be still, because we do have RSGR lots that are less than an acre and a quarter. And then, as another option was, again, this discussion of, if not 1.25, then where is the cutoff point? Is it RSGR, our lot that's 30,000 square feet, or 43,000 square feet, a little less than an acre? So, those were the discussion items. The Planning Commission was given the legislative history on this, and these ordinances and the minutes from all those council meetings. The first meeting, we had a discussion about the legislative history. So, a couple of weeks later, we provided the legislative history. And you can see that the council took this up over the decades, first starting with ordinance 630, and then all the minutes were attached. So, all that, they got to read. So, they got to see where the council was coming from, various councils over time. And so, there were regulations through ordinance, as they're listed there. The most recent regulations relate to the current zoning ordinance that are, were adopted in 2014. So, all that background information, with all that background information, their recommendation is to leave the 2014 zoning regulations in place. So, that was their, their motion. Now, I had, just as an aside, or maybe it's food for thought, or, I'm gonna back out of all these. This is the city's GIS system. I took off the street names, the address and everything to protect the innocent. But here's an example of what we deal with. This is a piece of property that four cargo containers showed up on. So, this is what we deal with. All the, a lot of the permits, I think I've said before, 80 to 90% of the permits we do are after-the-fact permits. So, either folks don't know we have a regulation, they don't talk to us, and then we're starting code cases. So, in my opinion, if this is opened up to other zoning districts, we do allow these in commercial, by the way. If you're a commercial business, you can also get a cargo container permit to store equipment supplies for your business. You can't have a cargo container and then have your friends bring stuff over. It has to be related to your business. So, we do allow them in the commercial districts. In the residential districts, it is the, in the zoning district, RSGR.
Are they allowed in industrial as well, as well?
Um, I gotta see, Rudy's right behind me. Yes.
He's hiding again.
Yeah, he's hiding.
So, just for reference, how big a lot is that?
That's an acre and a quarter lot. And those are actually, I turned off the federal patent easement layer, but those are essentially in the FPE on the south side of the property. And there's other code cases going on, building without permit. And they got rid of three of them and relocated it, and they have a permit application pending for one. And then, still trying to figure out to do what with all these, but that's another topic. So, I'm just letting you know, we could drive around here all, I could have come up with a whole slideshow on all of these that are unpainted, unlandscaped, that we find in the course of our day. And so, I think that is part and parcel of the Planning Commission recommendation, is that one would say, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. I think it's already a problem, to be honest with you, that keeping track of these, and virtually 80 to 90% of these are after-the-fact permits. And then, we have to go talk to folks to get them out of the wrong zoning district, or, you know, go through the permitting process.
Can you bring us up to speed? You're, there's some things that you're saying that I'm not familiar with. So, they have to have a permit. They're limited, I would think, for how many they have.
Correct.
They have to be painted a certain color.
Correct.
Can you just, can you tell us?
Oh, I'm sorry.
In general, what's the ordinance around to have one?
The, have to have an acre and a quarter, have to have the zoning for residential. And then, there is, in the regulations, there's a process you go through. Primarily, it really just boils down to that. It has to be behind the front building facade or setback. It has to meet setbacks. And then, it does have to be painted earth-toned colors. So, you get them overseas, they're red, they're blue, et cetera, et cetera. They have to be painted in the desert tones out here. And then, you have to come up with a landscape plan. And that landscape plan is our, you know, zero-scape desert landscaping to screen it. So, the whole idea is to screen them, so people don't know they're there. So, we work with folks. If it's in the backyard and there's a fence, obviously, we're not going to be as particular with landscaping if it is already screened by a six-foot wall, but these things are taller than six feet. But, so, some folks will plant vines or something, will work with them. But those are just the primary considerations.
Are there size regulations?
Yes, there are. So, really, it's on this lot, we've allowed folks, they come in essentially two sizes primarily. These are the 40-footers, but we've allowed two 20-footers to be kind of tethered or connected together, because folks will. So, we've allowed folks to do two 20s to get to the 140. So, they're only allowed one. It can only be the, I want to say, I think they're eight by 40 and eight by 20.
How does that compare to storage units, though? Can't, I thought people could have, wasn't that an issue where they could have so many storage sheds on their...
There's no limit on the number of storage sheds you can have.
See, so why would there, maybe we do need to relook at it for a lot of different reasons, because they're becoming a hot item. They're, they're rodent-free. You can't, they're hard to break into. They're, you can't, you can't light them on fire. I mean, they don't burn down. There's a lot, they're just, they're becoming more and more popular as they become more and more affordable. And they're a sturdy option for people that just need that, rather than having 20 storage sheds or whatever.
Yeah, you could regulate the number of storage sheds, so you don't have 20. That might be another topic. They, those storage sheds have to meet setbacks as well. So, if it's under 120 square feet, you don't need a permit, but they still have to meet setbacks. You get over 120 feet, 120 square feet, a storage shed needs a, a permit.
What are the six items in the top of that picture?
Those are equipment trailers. So, we don't have a limit on those either. So, this is, we think there's a business going on here. There's two non-conforming buildings. This is getting way into it. But this is a guest house. This is the main house. We don't think anybody lives there. This is an RV. This is a box truck. Now, they've done additional building without permits, actually into this FPE and the other side here. So, right now, the zoning code does not limit the number. So, like boat trailers, things like that. We regulate RVs. That's kind of the primary one we work with every day, is how many RVs can you have on your property? One. And so, we regulate those. But some of these have been moved. This is a 2019 photo, by the way. So, the four cargo containers are gone. There's one there that's still pending open case.
Is that a block wall all the way around it?
No, it's a chain-link fence.
So, are they allowed to install electricity in one of these if they want to? Is that part of the permit process?
Yeah, one, like 15 amp circuit, one 15, 15 amp circuit. Not, no plumbing, but one 15 amp circuit. So, if you want to have a light or a radio or something, we allow that.
But not to live in. You were not making them to live in.
No.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
That we know of.
I, I want to do a short little, I would say, some pictures and some ideas on it.
Oops, sorry, Matt. I'll let you go. All right.
The first one's blank, so. But I, I want to go into the aspects of it a little bit more, of the reasons why cargo containers, the use of them are advantageous. As you see, this is a, I'll say, a metal shed, but the, I'm gonna say rodents, and I'll just use the word rodents loosely on this, it could come in and have dug through. Okay, next one. And they do some damage. Well, if you notice the picture off to the right, they even unpack the silverware so that they're eating in style in it. They have no, I'll say, respect to anything that's in there. They're looking to do whatever damage they can to make nests and paraculate. Next. Now, this one is my tack room. Unfortunately, it took about roughly a month of damage that was done. Now, this is the floor of the tack room. Now, mind you, this is a wooden floor. This is a wooden tack building. That's a eight-by-eight facilities. And you can see the size rocks that they brought in. Okay, next one. And again, showing further back in that corner, you saw where the stuff was all piled up. I've had to remove it. And the amount of dirt that was brought in, in it. Next. And again, there's the hole where they came in. And if you notice, this rock that's brought in there, it's almost as big as a stupid hole. Now, these are pack rats that are bringing in this stuff. Okay, next. Another shot of going back further. If you notice, the, the saddle that's hanging from the saddle rack on the wall. Next one. They wanted, I guess, to do an easy cleanup for us, so they filled this bucket full of, half-full of dirt that's loaded with our brushes and everything that we use for the horses. And so, they wanted to make sure that we got the dirt out easily, I guess. Next one. There was three wheelbarrows that I took of dirt out of that building in it and had to replace the floor. Now, mind you, I didn't want to put poison down, because we have dogs. But I went out and purchased these electronic, I'll say, things that are supposed to keep pack rats and mice and rats away. They didn't work. It's kept the dogs away. The dogs refused to come into the backyard because they could hear it. And they were, but these individuals kept on coming, even with them out there. And we spent a little over $60 in trying to get something that would keep these wonderful visitors away. Next one, please. They decided to remove feed from our storage container. 28 pounds of pellets were removed. Now, mind you, this is a non-functioning refrigerator that we use to hold, I'll say, different types of things to keep them, keep the, say, residents out of. And, but they, they took advantage of storing food underneath this refrigerator that I had to move out. Next one. This is that saddle that you saw, the base of, up on it. And you noticed the damage now that was done. Now, this saddle is well over, worth well over $1,000. But when I had an estimate of what it was going to cost me to replace it or fix it, to clean it up, it's going to cost me four times as much to get the thing fixed. Next one. This is the fleece that's underneath it. They have destroyed. Next one. And again, this is the side on it. Next one. These used to have ties down so that you could tie down your jacket or your sleeping roll, or whatever you wanted to put on the back of the saddle. They ate them off. I don't know what they used them for, but they ate them off. And you can see the damage that's done to the back of the saddle as well. Next one. Now, mind you, these wood, these steel aluminum sheds, they're nice, but they don't stand up to high winds. Next one. And this is something that happens to them when we have some, some real good, strong winds. This happened to a neighbor of mine just down the street from us. It's not this picture, unfortunately. I don't have that picture anymore. But that's what happens sometimes to these other type. Next one. And that's what happened to a wooden shed. I, I've seen where the roofs have been severely damaged, even removed, on some of our monsoon winds that we get once in a while. Next one. Now, mind you, this is a cargo container, and the doors, as you can see, they are very secure. You can lock them so that you, that no one can get into them easily. Yeah, they can come in and cut the locks and actually end up getting inside, but it's going to take a lot of work. At those aluminum-sided sheds, an individual down the street from me several years ago had one in and had his equipment in it. And unbeknownst to him, someone decided to remove the back portion of the panel and go inside and steal a lot of his tools, because they are not secure. Next one. Look at the floor on this. It is very strong. It is a wooden floor, but underneath it is steel as well. And it is rodent-proof. You're not going to get the rodents in, as long as you don't leave the doors open like this. If you leave the doors open, yes, they're going to walk, you're going to come in and say, "Thank you." Next one. Now, this is a tack room that someone has. And, you know, it is, they've installed a door on it. And it is, you know, it is doing a fantastic job of maintaining the tack. This is going to not be, you know, a, an invite to these individuals. Next one. Now, Larry mentioned that, you know, there was 20-footers and 40-footers. There's also 60-footers, but I'm not saying anything about that. But there is a 10-footer on it. And the one, actually, both of these are 10-footers. The one on the right, as you're looking at it, is a, you know, a small cargo container. And it is something that, you know, is something that's usable. And it's advantageous to use something that's small. The reason why I put the picture of the one on the left is you can actually buy conversions to install the door and the window in them. Mind you, you know, you still have to worry about security in it as far as that goes. But, you know, if you wanted to put a door on them, you can. They are, you know, you can make them into this. And next one. And this is the last slide. Now, mind you, this is one of the bigger ones. But it reminds me of, unfortunately, we're, you know, talking about cargo containers, and anyone inside the city that currently has one, that has done something, too, is not going to volunteer that, several years ago, in fact, when it was, I'll quote, "illegal" to even have a cargo container inside the city, he brought in two cargo containers, and they were the 10-footers. He... He completely covered the outside with wood, put a porch on them, and, and really made them look nice on it. Yes, there's no windows in them. They are secure. He has no rodent problems for his horses or his tack, for his feed. The individual has sold his property to a new owner. I went to him and I said, "I'd like to take pictures of them and show them what you can do." Well, he's fearful of someone seeing where they are and getting into trouble with the city. So, he said, "No," and I respect him for that. But you can do things that you don't even know that they are a cargo container. You can cover the outside in the aspect, not only paint them the earth tone colors, but you can also cover them so that they are well concealed and no one knows that they're there. And I would definitely like to bring this back to, for a direction to staff at our next city council member meeting. Almost said city council member meeting, excuse me. But I think it's something that we need to look at the whole picture, not just the snapshots of the big, ugly, red containers. Let's look at the whole picture of what we can do and how we can address them.
Your Honor. So, I guess that's, go ahead.
I just have a question. Wouldn't the 10-footers be considered sheds?
They could be, but they're, they are a cargo container.
I mean, it seems to me like that could be put into the shed category because it's, the size is okay.
Yeah, the size is okay.
Yeah.
But again, it's a cargo container, and that would present a problem. The way our rules are written right now, a cargo container is illegal.
There's standard sizes and it's, it's the 20, the 40, and the 55.
The 20, and the 40, and the 60, yeah.
Well, the 55, and then they can, they can cut them down, which is expensive, but...
One of the things I was going to mention in the aspect on these, a 20-foot cargo container, its tear weight of it is over 5,000 pounds. So, it's not going to be blown over. I mean, if it, if it blows over, we're going to have a lot of other damage to, I'm going to have a severe damage to my house on this. A 40-footer is over 8,000 pounds. So, these things are quite heavy. Also, I was going to go into the cost on them. They're not cheap. They are fairly expensive. And to put one of these 10-footers, and I talked to the person that they're, they do deliveries, and they said, "If we put them in somebody's residential area in their backyard, we definitely have to come in with a crane." I mean, that costs money. It is, they are very expensive. A 10-foot one normally starts out for better than $1,000, and that's one that's got some nice dents in it. You want a nice, clean one without windows and doors on them, you're talking well over $1,000. So, these things are not in cheap facilities or buildings, they're not buildings, excuse me, are containers to be used as, as storage, but they are very safe and secure.
So...
Your Honor, yeah, so tonight's goal was just to find out if you wanted to get us on direction to staff, and I think I just heard that.
So, the, the, so some councilperson would bring this up and get it onto an agenda?
Yeah.
As, yeah.
Yep. Vice Mayor just did it.
Okay.
So, we'll put that on for council direction of staff on December 1st.
I'd be curious to know, since it's been almost 10 years since we went through this, what of other cities have they adapted to? And of course, we're not the urban cities. We are on the edge. We have a rural lifestyle. I'd be interested in Queen Creek, Cave Creek, all the cities on the fringe that have horse properties like us, and what are they doing?
Yep.
Your Honor?
Yes.
And to Vice Mayor's point, I mean, we could look at it instead of what size lot a cargo container could be on, but what size cargo container can be on a particular size lot?
Right.
So, that could be something we could look into also if it goes beyond the acre and a quarter, or should I say below? So, like our neighborhood, you know, like my house, I wouldn't, I wouldn't expect anything over 10 feet, right? So, and you can kind of adjust that as the lot size gets bigger. That's something we can look into as well.
Yeah, and I certainly think that's something we'd look at in, in the analysis and see what best practices are in addition to the, the storage, the number of unlimited storage that we have out there as well could be part of the discussion.
So, that'd be a work session?
So, if it would be a direction to staff on December 1st, and then we would get your input, and then we'd come back at a work session soon thereafter and keep it going.
Okay.
Thank you, Matt.
Presentation, discussion, and consideration on the extinguishment of a federal patent easement on Smoke Tree and Tomahawk. Raquel.
Wait, wait, wait. I need to address the canvas of the resolution.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the City Council, Raquel Schatz from the Public Works Department, here to discuss roadway extinguishment for Smoke Tree Street from Tomahawk to Vista Road. Very briefly, background behind these FPEs, federal patent easements, they were granted to the city by the Congress Act in 1938. The majority of them in the city are either five or two and a half acre parcels, and they are 33 feet in width along the, along the boundaries of the land. Earlier this year, both the Development Services Director and the Public Works, I mean, the city engineer came and did a presentation to you guys regarding the public policy implications for long-time transportation planning, in which this one, this extinguishment before you is one of those exclusions or exceptions to an extinguishment. So, the extinguishment in question here is circled here in the yellow. It's, most of you guys may know it, is Philly's Roadhouse. The purpose for the extinguishment is in June, their duplex caught on fire. So, where it stands right now is inside of the federal patent easement. However, for them, in order to rebuild or reconstruct based off the, the money they received from the insurance company, they have to do it in place. However, now, because of the new construction laws and the severity of the building, they're, well, they're in the, they're in the federal patent easement. So, to extinguish this, this portion of the federal patent easements now makes them compliant with, with rebuilding the duplex for where, where Philly's Roadhouse suffered in the fire. Any questions?
We've talked about this before.
Yeah, looks like no.
Okay. So, this was for a discussion and approval.
Okay, so this is not a public hearing. Is there any, any discussion among council? If none, I'll ask for a motion.
Your Honor, I move that the extinguishment of a federally patent easement located at Smoke Tree from Tomahawk Road to Vista Road for the purpose of alleviating setbacks so that Philly's Roadhouse can rebuild or repair the duplex which was destroyed in a fire be approved.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor. Your Honor, if I may? We have one item to go back to, and that was the canvas...
The one we pulled from consent?
Yeah.
Yeah, let's do that now.
So, there has to be certain data that is included in the resolution in order to canvass the results from the election. It was a very large election with a lot of measures on the ballots, and there is still data that we are waiting to receive from Maricopa County. I am, I would like to request that council make a motion to continue this until Tuesday, December 1st. By that time, we will have the information that's required.
If there's no discussion, then I'll ask for that motion.
Your Honor.
I'll move. He did a real quick one.
Cool.
Yeah.
You're fast.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes, fast.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
You unanimous, Your Honor. Thank you.
Presentation, discussion, and direction to staff on the creation of a draft ordinance relating to the regulation of recreational marijuana using the model ordinance language provided by the League of Arizona Cities and Towns. Rudy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Rudy Esquias, the Planning Manager. Mr. Mayor, on November 3rd, in the last general election, the voters of Arizona passed the Smart and Safe Arizona Act, a citizen, a citizen initiative relating to the responsible adult use regulation and taxation of marijuana, also known as the Recreational Marijuana Act. The Act declares that in the interest of public health and safety, the legal adult use of marijuana should be regulated so that legitimate tax-paying businesspeople, not criminal actors, conduct sales of marijuana. Marijuana sold in the state is tested, labeled, and subject to additional regulations to ensure consumers, consumers are informed and protected. Employers retain all of their rights for drug and alcohol-free workplaces. The health and safety of employees in the industry are protected. Individuals must show proof of age before purchasing marijuana, and that age is 21. Selling, transferring, providing marijuana to minors is illegal. Driving, boating, flying under the influence of marijuana also remains illegal. There's a couple of new definitions. A marijuana establishment is a retail establishment at which the sale of marijuana is conducted along with the possible cultivation and manufacture of marijuana products. It's also an off-site location where marijuana is cultivated, processed, and products are made, but which does not conduct sales directly to consumers. It may also be an off-site location at which marijuana products are manufactured, manufactured, packaged, and stored, also does not conduct sales to consumers. A marijuana testing facility includes facilities operated by the Arizona Department of Health Services or by another licensee to analyze the potency of and test the marijuana for harmful contaminants. The Act does not change the medical marijuana laws, except that an existing dispensary or a new dispensary, if, if they're, if the city so approves one, may also apply to be a dual licensee, meaning they would sell both medical marijuana to the qualifying patients that they always have, and they could also now also offer recreational marijuana to anyone over 21 years of age. The Act does not allow smoking in public or open spaces. The Act does not allow people to operate cars, airplanes, or boats. The Act does impose a 16% tax on recreational marijuana. It does allow people to consume marijuana in their homes, carry small quantities of marijuana or paraphernalia. It allows a person over the age of 21 to cultivate up to six plants in their own private residence, or if two people over the age of 21 live together, they can cultivate 12 plants. And it also sets penalties for violators. So, under the Act, and there's, by the way, if you read the Act, there is just a ton of stuff in there, so I'm just kind of covering the basics and how it may affect us. Under the Act, a city may enact reasonable zoning regulations that limit the use of land for marijuana establishments and testing facilities to specific areas, specific zoning districts in our case. It, a city may limit the number of establishments or marijuana testing facilities or both. A city may prohibit marijuana or marijuana testing facilities or both. City may regulate the time, place, and manner. A city may establish regional restrictions on signage regarding marijuana and testing facilities. The city may restrict or prohibit delivery within its jurisdiction. A city may not enact a rule that is more restrictive than a comparable rule that applies to marijuana, medical marijuana dispensaries. And let me just pause there a little bit. Under our rules, a medical marijuana dispensary requires a conditional use permit process. As you know, conditional use permits go to our Planning and Zoning Commission, and our rules limit, they relate the number of dispensaries in the city to the state's community health analysis areas, otherwise known as the CHAWS. They have spacing requirements. You can't be within so many feet of a school, a park, other protected uses. Of course, you can't smoke at a, at a dispensary. And there's other rules in place right now for our medical marijuana dispensaries. So, if, once again, we can adopt a rule that's more restrictive, but, but we could adopt rules that are similar to what we use for dispensaries. The city may not make the operation unduly burdensome if a locality has not prohibited marijuana establishments. A city may not conflict with state law or rules adopted pursuant to state law, may not prohibit the transportation of marijuana on its public roads.
Can I, can we stop there?
Sure.
That one makes, how does it get there if you can't transport it?
Well, if an individual is carrying marijuana, that it would not, no longer be a crime, and that's in another part of the statute, as long as they're carrying less than an ounce or less than five grams.
This says that a marijuana establishment cannot, if one wants to sell to another one, how do they get it there?
Well, it says that the city may not prohibit the transportation. So, if there's a dispensary in Superior...
Double negative.
And they're traveling, and they're carrying product through AJ, that would not be illegal.
Okay.
Attorney wrote this.
That explains it. No, it was a double...
Yeah. Okay. So, it's telling us what we cannot do, not what they can do.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
And the last couple, the city may not restrict or interfere with the ability of a dual licensee or an entity to become a dual licensee. So, our two dispensaries could apply to become dual licensees. And I went and visited them yesterday, and I think they're both going to apply to be dual licensees. Except, and lastly, except is expressly prohibited, the city cannot conduct, prohibits or restricts any conduct or transaction allowed by this chapter, imposes the ability, liability, or penalty in addition to that prescribed by the chapter. In other words, we can't make rules that are more restrictive than the state. So, possible direction to staff, and by the way, this has, is a little bit different than the PowerPoint you have in your presentation, because after reading a couple of times through the Act, I came up with a couple of other things you might consider. Possible directions, you can direct staff to amend the zoning ordinance to regulate marijuana establishments and testing facilities in the same manner as we do dispensaries through the CUP process, including specific zoning districts, limit on number of establishments, impose a separation distance, other requirements, and I attached the, our medical marijuana rules in your, in your packets. You can direct us to draft an ordinance to allow marijuana establishments outright in certain zoning districts, but you can also include limit on number of stores, specific separation distances, rules on delivery and signage, subject to the city's normal commercial development requirements, or possibly industrial requirements if it's a manufacturing facility. You may direct us to draft an ordinance... Yes, ma'am?
You were on a roll there. Don't we already, go back a slide, please? Thank you. Don't we already limit number and specify locations and have specific distances?
Yes.
So, we already do most of what's in that second suggestion?
For medical, yes, for medical marijuana, yes. And we can adopt similar rules for retail stores as well.
Rudy?
Yes, ma'am.
Didn't, but the city, when the medical marijuana came out, we were only allowed as many as we had the pharmacies?
Yes, that rule changed.
So, that did change?
Yes.
Okay.
But the state law still relates the number of marijuana establishments to the number of pharmacies that there are in the state, so basically, one to 10.
So, that's still in there?
I believe we can still apply that, yes. And furthermore, in our CHAWS, once again, community health analysis area, I believe we have the two dispensaries that are allowed in our CHAWS. So, I don't think we have to allow any more if that's where you're going with this question.
No, but we don't limit the number of bars...
Right.
...in the city.
Right.
Who's laughing?
Do you, uh...
We don't want to limit the number of, I don't know what it, pot places.
Yes, we do.
You know, is that where you're going? So, the dispensaries can have a license, but if anybody else wants to apply for a license just to sell the legal pot, we don't want to eliminate that, I would assume.
Well, that's why we're seeking your direction here tonight. If we, and Bryant brought this up the other day, he says, because we gave you several options, he says, "Well, there's also a no-action option." Yes, we can choose to not create, come up with any new rules to regulate marijuana establishments. What would happen is they would probably end up being treated like retail establishments or bars.
Right.
You know, and bars, they have to be so far away from a school, they do require state approval, but basically, bars can go in just about any commercial zone.
Right.
And then, if it's a manufacturing facility, I think we could make the interpretation that those types of use is similar to our cultivation infusion kitchen facilities would have to go in an industrial zone or a business park or something like that.
Rudy, do you see the state jumping in to create a whole branch to handle this like the liquor board? What have other states done?
I think it's the Department of Health Services that is in charge of licensing these facilities and also coming up with the operating rules and procedures of how they're going to create licenses for these things. And people, marijuana agents, would still have to be registered with the state. They can't be felons to work in a marijuana establishment. Rules, probably along the lines of the whole set of rules that they came up for medical marijuana, would also be created for recreational marijuana establishments.
So, that branch of government already exists, so they'll probably beef it up and hire more people into that agency?
Yes, and if you got a chance to read through the act, there's all kinds of monies being allocated for DHS and for the Department of Health Services and for an expungement fund for people who have been convicted of minor marijuana offenses. I heard on the news that Maricopa County is already just dismissing all minor marijuana possession cases. So, yeah, there's a whole other bureaucracy that deals with the, how they're going to be regulated.
Could I ask the chief a question?
Chief, you can get impaired driving for operating a vehicle under the influence of this, correct?
You can, but it's a lot more difficult than the, under alcohol.
My question is going to be, you have breathalyzer tests for alcohol. Is there any kind of a test to test if, how impaired they are?
No.
So, how does that get enforced?
You have to rely on the officer's expertise of recognition and documentation, and they do a standard test that they would do with the individual, but there's no physical testing, which is the problem I have with the DUI.
There is a blood test. That could come later.
They can order a blood test.
To see how much THC is in your blood, but that's, that's if there's impairment.
So, it's an officer's discretion of impairment? Because even if...
It's his, when he, they'd have to go to special school or be a drug recognition expert, and they would be able to identify the certain symptoms of a person that would be impaired, whether he's impaired with marijuana, or heroin, or methamphetamine.
Well, just like smelling alcohol or smelling pot, if you have a sense of smell.
I don't think the brownies have any smell.
No, not all of it does, but...
And if you're asking my professional opinion, it's very problematic, but it's what the voters voted for, so...
Yeah, and I'm sure our officers don't want to have to deal with this, but it's been thrust upon them.
Yeah, so, just another thing we'll have to try to dance around.
I have a question for Rudy, but I wasn't, I don't think you were done with the presentation. Did you have, were you, did you have more? I have some questions for you, but I wanted to wait till you were done with presenting.
Just a couple more possible directions. Draft an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance to prohibit marijuana establishments and testing facilities in the city. Draft an ordinance to amend the code to allow existing marijuana dispensaries to become dual licensees through our conditional use permit process. In other words, I think we can make the existing dispensaries go through a CUP amendment if they want to become a dual licensee. We can research what other cities are doing. Joel's already found a few cities that are regulating, prohibiting, and are allowing for the dual licensees. You have a model ordinance in your packets created by the League of Cities and Towns that pretty much gives you all the language for us to create an ordinance, depending on whether you want to prohibit, regulate, allow, many different things. And of course, there may be other options. Bryant mentioned the no-action option, and Matt, I think I had a different slide, but that's okay. So, we can allow hybrids of these directions. You don't have to pick just one. You can tell us how you would like us to craft a code, if you want to direct us to craft a code. And that's my presentation, Mr. Mayor.
So, I have two questions.
Lots of questions.
Just go ahead.
Forgive me if this is a dumb question, but, so, will people be able to only buy it from these facilities, or will they be able to buy it from anywhere? And number two, is there, do we have the option of requiring some kind of, and I, don't, they have a card or something, a medical marijuana card? Do we have the option of requiring that? And the reason I'm asking is because my concern is, with the increase of fentanyl getting put in street marijuana, that if people are just able to buy it wherever, that's, I mean, the chief, I'm sure, can speak to the fentanyl issue in street marijuana. It's scary, especially when you talk about kids that just, you know, they're messing around, just being kids. So, two questions, does it have to be from a facility?
Yes.
Okay, and does it, do they, is there a requirement, or can we require some kind of a card or something, or they just, okay, so, they just have the driver's license over 21?
Right. Yeah, now, if you want to buy it legally, you would have to go to a dispensary or a marijuana establishment. You can ask your friend to buy some for you and then have your friend sell it to you. So, you can't buy it from an unlicensed person to buy it legally. You could, you have to buy it from one of these facilities.
How are they going to know, though? How would it?
Well, you don't.
I mean, how would it?
Same thing with the medical marijuana.
Would it be in a marked container or something?
Yes, yes.
Like a medicine bottle?
They have to be marked, they can't, you know, exceed, they have to say what ingredients are in there, if it's, you know, a different type of marijuana product, like a gummy or a cookie or whatever, or the vape pens. There's different standards for those, and they have to be marked, and they got to be childproof. So, there are those types of regulations in there already.
So, at least an officer could identify, okay, this is in a sandwich bag. It's not, you know, it'd be like somebody having prescription pills in a sandwich baggy. You have to have it in your medicine bottle, correct?
Well, when you buy it from the store, it comes in that type of packaging, but once it's in your possession, you could, I suppose you could put it in a baggie, and it would be legal.
As long as it's not one else.
It's the same as pouring a beer in a cup while you're driving.
Good God.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Robin.
Do we, since this is a retail situation now, can we apply sales tax to that?
No.
No sales tax? It's all got to be state?
Just what the state collects at 16.
Well, fully on them.
16%, and now, if we have, I don't know if we have any local sales taxes on businesses. If we do, then it would have to be the same as we apply to other businesses.
But we could apply sales tax.
If we apply them to other businesses.
To a retail business, the same as we do any other retail, but that was the question.
We can't treat them differently.
That's the question, okay? And can charge a business license.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, absolutely.
So, just, what's the, I'm just, why, why do we need a medical and then just a recreational? Is there a level of potency?
Medical is not taxed. Recreational will be taxed at 16%.
But is there a different, is there a level of potency?
No.
Or anything like that?
Yeah, there is, according to that ordinance that you sent us.
Well, yes.
There is a level of potency.
But I think it also applies to medical.
There was a difference. There was, and I can't recall exactly what it was, that medical was one thing, and retail, recreational had to be lower.
Yeah, you're right. There was some language to that effect.
And so, there's, so, even the medical or the recreational marijuana will have some kind of a testing requirement
Yes.
that they have to fall under. It's kind of like back in the, this ages me, and maybe it didn't have it down here, but back up in South Dakota, when we were growing up, not that I ever partook in it or anything like that, but...
Back up in the hills, a bar in the hills.
When, back in the day, you could buy, when you were 18, you could buy 3-2 beer, but you had to be 21 to buy full-strength beer. So, that's kind of the same thing with medical and recreational marijuana, even though they're both 21 now, but that's how you distinct, the distinction between.
Right, and once again, the idea behind the testing facilities is to test for potency, and so that other harmful contaminants aren't getting in there.
So, they don't lay some with other things.
Yes, yes, or have mold in them, or other, or other things you don't want in them.
So, Rudy, I kind of have a two-tier question. One, still, the CHAWS, I'm assuming, going to be the same.
Yes.
Now, I remember when the second dispensary came in, so, the CHAWS also encompasses Gold Canyon.
Yes.
And there's a lot of undeveloped, you know, county land that it also develops, but for some apparent reason, it fell on the burden of Apache Junction to allow it into the city limits. Now, let's say two years from now, they decide, well, you can have one more in your CHAWS. Now, are you saying that this is allowing us to deny anyone that wants to come in here and put another dispensary, even though it's in our CHAWS, but so is Gold Canyon? Now, Gold Canyon also has a retail sector that could have very easily accommodated something like that, but the fancy lawyers came in, the planning, zoning, and things like that, and next thing you know, here it is. So, did I understand that correctly, that earlier on the presentation, it says what cities can do is deny
Yes.
another dispensary? Even if they say one more can go in that CHAWS, because that CHAWS doesn't just only encompass Apache Junction, right? It encompasses a big portion of Pinell County and two...
I think we can make the reasonable argument that we've accommodated the two dispensaries required under our CHAWS. Can a lawyer push it? Of course they could. But I think one thing you could do, should you choose to do so, is prohibit any standalone marijuana establishments. I don't think we can prevent the existing dispensaries from becoming dual licensees, but you can prevent these new standalone stores. Now, can we prevent another dispensary? Probably, but that'll be tested if such a request like that should come along.
So, clarify what you're saying, we could prohibit a new retail?
You can prohibit the, what are defined as marijuana establishments and marijuana testing facilities, and just limit recreational marijuana sales to the existing dispensaries? Like other cities have done, a number of cities have done, have done that already, or opposed to that already.
Well, for the most part, the dispensaries are going to be the dual, the dual license.
I think they will.
But, once the state decides that more can go into a CHAWS, then you've got a whole new lottery going on, where people are going to want to, probably not just a medical dispensary, but solely a recreational dispensary.
Yes.
Or throw out the CHAWS altogether. And just let it free enterprise.
They could.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
There's also a transfer ability. They could transfer one of their, they could transfer another dispensary into a CHAWS, so that's another one. And then you could apply the CUP requirements for medical marijuana, but it depends on what you want to do with recreational. And I know this is the first time you've seen this. I would not recommend you make a decision tonight, and I would recommend that you continue this
I agree.
to maybe December 1st to discuss again, and maybe you even need another discussion. But I wouldn't go too long, because things are, some cities are taking action on it. In fact, I think Yuma is taking action on it tonight.
So, has Department of Health Services, though, finalized all of their regulations and how they're going to run it?
And they have so many months to do so. So, go ahead.
Anything we do could really be overridden by what they come out with in the end. So, if we wait for them, we can follow their lead, or instead of doing something and then having to backtrack it.
Well, as long as we don't do anything that violates the law. The Department of Health Services cannot, has to comply with the law, and I think we can draft an ordinance, and the league has given us an example of an ordinance that we can use to model our ordinance. So, and the other, the other thing is that on January 19th, 2021, the Department of Health Services will start accepting applications for marijuana establishments. So, there is kind of a need to do something sooner rather than later, if you want to do something, you know, if you want to come up with new rules.
At least have the conversations going and start working on it, yeah.
Right, and keep in mind that our text amendment process is, you know, like a two, two-and-a-half month, three-month process, because it's got to go through P&amp;Z, and it's going to come to you, and it's got to be advertised, and then all that good stuff.
Okay, so what's our next move? We're going to have it on a direction to staff, or is this direction to staff now?
Let's continue it to the first.
Let's see what some other cities are doing.
And that'll give us an opportunity to mull this over, find out what other cities are doing, and
Yeah.
and reach a reasonable decision, perhaps.
Let them be the guinea pigs.
Yeah, this town's too small for more than two.
So, direction to staff?
On the first.
On the first?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you need a motion on that, Jennifer?
Yeah, can I have a motion?
Yeah. I move that this agenda item be continued to the first meeting in December.
Second.
May I ask for clarification? There's a work-study session possibly on November 30th, or do you want this brought back on Tuesday at a regular meeting December 1st?
I'd like to see it on the work session.
Yeah, thank you.
Definitely, and on the regular session, just in case the council decides to go ahead and vote on it then.
Although, you could do a new business item on December 1st, or an old business item, however you want to coin it, because I don't know if we're having a lot of items on the 30th. I haven't seen too much coming through Legisstar.
We need some time to talk through this, and I think that's why I would suggest it be on the work session. We don't need to be corralled by time.
Okay, so, what are we, what are we hearing in there? The original motion is continue this.
Continue to work-study session on November 30th.
Are we okay with that?
And bring it back on the regular meeting on the first.
Yep, second.
And I have a second from Vice Mayor.
Roll call.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Here.
Mayor Searcy?
You just woke up.
Hello. Mayor Searcy?
Yes.
Motion passes, Your Honor.
Direction to staff on resignation of Planning and Zoning Commissioner Shirley Uli and the process to fill the vacant position.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Before you start this, I'm considering making an application for the Planning and Zoning Commission, and therefore I think I ought to recuse myself from this discussion.
So, other than that, what is the, and then also keep in mind, there's another position coming open as well. Joel, can we roll both of these into the next meeting?
Yes, I'd say you do a motion to bring it back on whatever, the 30th, or the first, or both, if you want to interview people and then select on the first, or whatever you'd like to do.
And we did talk about this kind of extensively yesterday, so...
And I don't know if you want to include interviews for the next, open it up for interviews. This is really, Jennifer should be, should talk about this a little bit on the process. If you want to bring, do interviews and open it up for the applications on the internet, that's something you might want to address, Jennifer.
So, the direction to staff that I'm looking for is how you would like to proceed. Would you like to open up the application process for, say, maybe a week to 10 days, allow outside entities that would have an interest to serve? Also, reach out to those former applicants to see if they're still interested, and then bring that back to council on the date of your choosing to interview applicants, say, maybe on the 30th, and then appoint on the first.
So, need.
That's, yeah, that's all we need to know.
Yes, and I agree, that's something that...
Motion in a second.
Well, I think it gives other people an opportunity to come in. It gives, you know, we can find out whether or not people that applied, maybe they got put on a different board, and they're not interested in this. So, yeah, I think exactly what you said is a great way to go.
Okay.
And do let's screen them for residency.
It's on the applications now. Thank you.
Okay, roll call.
Just a question before. If we choose to do the, well, if we have the election or the selection on the first, and we choose to appoint somebody who's on a conflicting board, then that person, that opening would have to take the next two weeks? Or was it like when we did it in October, we could choose to appoint somebody to the vacancy that would be made by the appointment? Does that make sense?
So, you're saying that if you appoint someone to P&amp;Z that is serving on the conflicting board?
Right.
Which is my Board of Adjustment?
Board of Adjustment.
Then, that terminates their position on the Board of Adjustment, and that would leave a vacancy on that. If council does that and wants to appoint someone to that Board of Adjustment, I would need to know in the motion, because I would have to add that agenda item to appoint someone
For the December 1st meeting.
For that, correct.
Okay, I'm just, that, there's a possibility, because on the list that we, that we have of people who were interested in the past, we did appoint them to the Board of Adjustment. So, we just need to think about that, if we're going to do it on December 1st or wait for two more weeks, which, it's not, Board of Adjustments doesn't meet a whole lot, but it's just something to think about.
Is that amendment, is that an amendment to the motion?
I'm just asking. So, it's already been made?
Well, you could amend it, so that if you do, if you want to pick someone from the Board of Adjustment... for P and Z, then you're going to want to probably also replace the Board of Adjustment members.
But do we have to do it that night? I mean, that's a board that doesn't meet. There'll be plenty of time to redo that.
You don't have to. That's up to you.
I just was throwing it out there for proof of thought for everybody, so.
So if not, you, you have a motion pending.
We have a motion and a second.
Okay.
Okay.
Roll call.
All right, Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Mayor Surti?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor?
Waiting for Robin to come back?
She's in the TV room. She's listening to the whole.
Congratulations.
Right?
Robin, you got nominated, but you didn't get a second.
Golly gee, that seems to be the story of my life lately.
Do we, do we have a motion on upcoming council dates?
Your Honor, I moved at an executive session at 6:00 PM and a work session at 7:00 PM for the Monday, November 30th, 2020, and Tuesday, December 1, 2020, to be held in the City Council Conference Room and City Council Chambers located at 300 East Superstition Boulevard at Apache Junction, Arizona, respectively, and other meetings if necessary.
Roll call.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Mayor Surti?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor?
This is a time for the public to express requests, communications, comments, and suggestions. Each speaker must have already filled out a request to speak form and handed it to the city clerk before the end of the city manager's report. All issues shall be presented in a professional manner without personal attack. Under the open meeting law, the council cannot engage in discussion on the issues presented, but may respond to criticism and may direct staff to follow up with the director, with the speaker directly and replace this matter on a future agenda for council discussion. There's a three-minute time limit for each speaker. I have several, and the first one is Michael Vandermolen. And when you come up, we'll need your address.
My address was on the form that I filled out.
Thank you.
So, okay. I want to talk about the trash service thing. I did go to two of the meetings that the, they had down at Los Gringos. But I expected somebody from the council or somebody there to go ahead and address all the people about what this trash deal really was, and I was not aware. I have never had trash service at my house after the first month that I moved in, and I've been in my place for 21 years. I'm one person. I'm retired. I do not generate as much garbage as a family of four would. And I am on a fixed income. I had a hospital stay earlier this year, so I have an awful lot of medical bills right now. And I have another problem with my vehicle is in the shop right now, and I'm looking at a $500 repair bill on that. And I only have the one vehicle. But this trash expense is an unnecessary undue hardship to me for having to have this. Plus, it's increasing traffic on my little dirt road. I'm on a little dirt road, and there's only two houses there, and I'm at the end of it. And so having this traffic coming up and down just really isn't necessary. But I take care of my trash and take care of it, and that is what I do. I wait until the city has, or the dump has their free deals, and I do that. Otherwise, I do have some friends in town that, if necessary, I go in town. But for me to have to pay for this trash service, I find it an undue hardship for me. And I don't believe, I believe that this was a thing that should have been brought up to the voters to vote on instead of just having the council arbitrarily make up their mind that this is what was going to happen. So I wanted to express that to you. Thank you very much.
Joel, are we allowed to ask a question?
No.
No.
Okay.
Sorry.
They cannot ask a question?
You can possibly wait around afterwards, and then someone may talk to you.
Okay, I would appreciate that.
Ken Coburn?
Evening. My name's Ken Coburn, 384 North Valley Drive, Apache Junction. I wanted to thank Chip. Wonderful presentation that you made. Second point I wanted to make, the fork and knife is shed, was actually mine, that I lost 95% of my mom's, the photo albums that she's collected over years, her keepsakes. I'm the last of my family that's alive, so I lost everything, all the keepsakes. The sheds can be made to look, the storage containers can be made to look like a shed. You can't tell the difference. Keep your areas clean, make them look nice. They're wonderful. I just, it's been brought up over a year ago, been here, planning and zoning, back to here. Not sure where it's going here, back to planning and zoning. But I'm, I'm hoping that something gets resolved or a plan made. Pretty much all I got to say, but Chip said it all, and I'm just hoping it goes from there. Thank you.
Jeff Barlett?
All right, I'm Jeff Barlett. I'm over at 108 North Meridian Drive, apartment 220 in Apache Junction, Arizona. Hang on just a second here. All right, so what I'd like to bring up is the need for public transportation. I was watching the meeting last night. Someone was bringing that up. Looks like the city is looking to spend a bunch of money on other things that I personally would disagree with, and I think the city needs to watch their budget. So I have this sheet here, I have two sheets, and I feel that public transportation should be done, maybe by like one bus, for example. But I feel like it needs to be at a limited budget. I don't think it should be overspent here. So I have these here just to help me out here and get my point across, because I'm not very good at speaking these things here. But I'd like to say that my request is that this be placed on a future agenda item for approval for a limited budget transportation plan. And I think that maybe initial cost, maybe for a small shuttle bus to go from, maybe out to Sausman and Maine, would probably cost around under 20 grand here, and I think you can probably go lower here. I have some, I was on the internet last night looking at some prices of used shuttle buses, used school buses, and let me see here, also suggested what it should cost per year for, and this is just me using higher numbers than, let me see here. Give me a second. See, I was going over what it would cost to purchase here, also staff costs, what it would cost, and just a couple of things here. It's easier to write this up and then speak it here. Is my time up, or?
No.
Okay.
Red.
And then, this is why I wrote all this up, because I knew I was going to screw this up.
You're fine. You're doing good.
But yeah, I wrote like suggested routes here. I've also put a list of things not to do. Don't overspend. Don't just make it for a certain group of people. Don't, like, it should be for anyone who's willing to pay. Most importantly, charge a fee. Don't take out any bonds. And personally, I feel that taxes shouldn't be raised. Just keep the budget limited. And I personally would like to give this to anyone who might be interested, like either the city manager or clerk. Thank you very much.
Very bad ideas. What the hell is this?
Brayden Biggs? Start the clock.
Yeah.
I will get it under three minutes. Mayor, Members of Council, Brayden Biggs, 2492 West Cactus Run. I wanted to bring this to the attention of not only you all, but the attention of our community. One of the things that we traditionally do around the holidays is thank our, well, especially in November, is thank our veterans and those who have already served our country, but we don't often do a lot for those who are currently in the, in the service of our country. So I got together with both of the VFWs, Post 7968 and Post 9399, as well as the Salvation Army and AJ Cares or Apache Junction Cares. And what we decided to put together was a drive for our current service members from the Apache Junction, Gold Canyon, Peralta Trails area. Really, the way that we kind of look at this is if you're inside the AJ Unified School District boundaries, you're one of us. It doesn't matter if you're just outside the city limits or not. And what we're looking to do is between now and December 10th, get together the information for those service members in all five branches. The Space Force doesn't count yet, unfortunately. But putting together all five of those, or all of their information, and sending them just a small little thank you card from the community, thanking them for serving their country, as well as a small care package reminding them of home. Of course, during the holidays, it's really tough to be either somewhere in a different state from your family, or of course, somewhere abroad overseas, away from your family. So what we are seeking is for families to send us their, their loved ones' information. Again, we do ask that they live here or are from here. So if you're a parent and your child grew up here and is no longer here, you can send us their information. We do need their APO information. Please do send that to the information on the flyer. So either email it to the aux9399vfwforvets@hotmail.com. You can stop into either VFW, or of course, contact me, so that way we can make sure that that information is secure and doesn't get out to the general public as well. And of course, if you have any questions, you can always contact me. But the goal is to have this, all of the information, by December the 10th, so we can get everything mailed out to our soldiers. So, thank you.
George Schroder?
Good evening. George Schroder, 2444 West Virginia Street, Apache Junction. I didn't come last time because I was rather upset, because neighbors in my neighborhood didn't get the memo from code enforcement to clean up their neighborhoods, their houses, their crackheads. Quit selling drugs in my neighborhood. Quit having yard sales every day, every day, for two years. They knew it. They didn't say anything. They didn't find them. They didn't ask them to stop. Didn't do anything. So the guy thought I told on them. You know, he said, he went to Mr. Hazel, "He told, he told on us, and he doesn't like Mormons, so we want him taken out of our neighborhood." Really? So far, we don't have red flag laws, and he has absolutely zero evidence of anything I have ever done in my life in terms of violence, going after people in a physical way. You don't like my attitude? That's just two tough rat hairs. I get stuff done. Speaking of which, I presented you with charges against four county employees. I don't think it was a miracle. I know you did a good job. You got elected. Great. But it wasn't a miracle. You had help. The county manager got fired two weeks ago. County treasurer is under investigation. I got one more to go, and it's a really good day. Remember all those charges I let you see? I applied them to the State Attorney General's office. This is the result of that. That's what I do. That's my law. I get people out of business, out of my neighborhood, and I don't care who doesn't like that. I don't have to. It's the Constitution. I have rights, too. They're supposed to be better than the crackheads and, you know, the land of mystery, mystery tour with the drugs. We're just helping drug addicts, a lot like the garbage thing. It's racketeering, just because you say it's legal. It's not legal, okay? There is now a class action lawsuit. Ms. Townsend has not paid her bill. She lives in the city of Apache Junction. I don't care what anybody says, okay? There's a reason why she hasn't paid her bill. She wants a class action lawsuit. Let's see if we can't help her. Have a good night.
Krista, I know you had a question.
I'll ask the staff afterwards. The question was for the, one of the people, but I'll meet with them.
Any other questions or comments with staff? Okay, hearing and seeing none, we will be adjourned.